Good evening. Welcome to this December 6, 2021, meeting of the Norfolk City Council. To begin, I will call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Granquist?
Here.
Arnz?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Boston?
Here.
Hildebrand?
Here.
Okay. We'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still move.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right. That takes us to item number 15 on the council agenda under Public Hearings and Related Action. We'll open this public hearing at the request of Richard J. and Kathy A. Sullivan to consider a zoning change from R1, one and two family residential district, to R3, multiple family residential district on property addressed as 306 Indiana Avenue. And to kick off the public hearing, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner.
Thank you. I just want to make a clarification. We do have a typo in the actually agenda item. We have the correct one and two family residential district description, but it's supposed to be R2 and not R1. And just so everybody knows, the ordinance attached to the agenda is correct. The public hearing was correct. This is the only thing that had a typo on it. And the request is for a group care facility wanting to go into that house. And so that is why they're requesting an R2 to an R3 zoning because it is outright permitted in R3. It would need to be a conditional use permit if they cared to go to an R2 and stay that. There is about an R3 zoning, probably about two and a half blocks to the west, and there is actually C3 zoning about a half a block to the south of this. It's just north of Omaha Avenue. The applicant who wants to do the use is here. If you have any questions, it's being at a group home.
Thank you, Val. Any questions for Val? Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Evening.
Hi. My name is Danielle Willerson, and I am with the Women's Empowering Lifeline, and it is our goal to make this home into a Level 3.5 dual-disorder treatment facility for adults in Norfolk.
Adults what?
Adults in Norfolk.
How many residents do you project?
We'll have up to 10 in that house.
Is there any concern with increased parking in that area?
No, actually, the way that the house sits, it's off of alley access, and so there'll be parking over through the alley, and then there's actually an alley back behind the home, too, so that there'll be adequate parking without us having to use the street.
Okay. Any other questions for Danielle?
Can I get you to sign in?
We will have to have you sign form in front of you.
Sign or print? Sign?
All right. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now? Okay, seeing and hearing no one. Ask for a planning commission report, please.
Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 16, 2021, at the request of Richard J. and Kathy A. Sullivan to consider a zoning change from R2, one and two family residential district, to R3, multiple family residential district on property addressed as 306 Indiana Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a six to zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 16, looking for a motion to consider ordinance number 5756 approving a zoning change from R2 to R3 on property addressed as 306 Indiana Avenue.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number 5756 approving a zoning change from R2 to R3.
Second then.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Questions on this council?
I do have a question for Val. Planning Commission, any opposition at all during the night?
We only had one person show up for the public hearing, and he just mainly had a question because he was confused if the R3 zoning was for the entire neighborhood or just this piece of property.
Okay.
And when it was just this piece of property, he was okay with that, and he also said he didn't have an issue being in the neighborhood with this organization running the group home.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Val. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5756 carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third. Means there is no opposition.
Second then.
Okay, motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5756 carries on second and third.
Item 17, and we'll open this public hearing at the request of Dennis P. and Carol Werner to consider zoning change from I1 Light Industrial District to R1 Single Family Residential District on property addressed as 1600 North Airport Road. And to kick off the hearing, for some background, again, Val Grimes, please.
Thank you. This piece of property is on North Airport Road, just west of 13th Street, Highway 81. The house is already there. What they would like to do is enlarge their housing lot, which is rather small right now. They also own a large property to the north that has a lake, and I believe that was actually spoken about during the course of annexation about Mateo expanding their gravel operations into that lake. And so they would like to make their residential lot just slightly larger and then break that off from the lake land. And so since the house is non-conforming right now as I1 to do that, and if they ever wanted to make any expansions or anything to their residential, they would need the residential zoning. And since it's less than two acres that they're requesting, we suggested an R1. They have given the 40-foot buffer yards on this lot, too, since they would still be R1 to I1, and since they are doing the zone change, they would be required to have the buffer yards. I believe the owners are here. If you have any questions for them. Oh, and to the actual plat is Agenda Number 19. So if the zone change does not pass on all three readings tonight, then we would bump and have the plat next time.
Okay, thank you, Val. Any questions on that? Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Seeing and hearing no one. Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 16, 2021, at the request of Dennis P. and Carol Werner to consider a zoning change from I1 Light Industrial District to R1 Single Family Residential District on property addressed as 1600 North Airport Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a six to zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item 18 and look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5757 approving a zoning change from I1 to R1 on property addressed as 1600 North Airport Road.
Yeah, all right. The ordinance number 5757 for consideration.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion or further questions on this council? Okay, hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5757 carries on first reading.
Now, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third, seeing there's no opposition.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5757 carries on second and third.
All right, that takes us to our regular agenda, and item number 19. We'd look for a motion to consider Resolution Number 2021-54 approving the final plat of D and C Werner subdivision.
I'll offer for consideration Resolution 2021-54.
Motion in second. And again, Val, could you give us some background on this, please?
Yes, thank you. This is the associated plat with the zone change just previous. This is essentially a one-lot subdivision because the remaining area that contains the lake is well over 10 acres, and you do not need a subdivision for that. And so they are just plating the one residential lot that had the zone change on it.
Okay, thank you, Val. Any questions? Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2021-54 is adopted.
Item 20, we'd look for a motion to consider Resolution Number 2021-55 calling $630,000 of outstanding series 2016 general obligation recreational facilities refunding bonds.
Make a motion for consideration of Resolution Number 2021-55.
Motion in second. And to give us some background on this, Randy Gates, our city
This is the final payment on the bonds we issued for the recreational facilities. The original bond issue was authorized clear back in 2010. The occupation tax has come in better than we originally anticipated, and the last of these bonds will be called for January 11. The final occupation tax should have ceased on November 30. We've had a few businesses that are still collecting it, but we're trying to get those rounded up and make sure they stop collecting that tax like they're supposed to. So residents should no longer be paying the city's food and beverage or lodging occupation taxes. We'll get those taxes into us towards the end of December. It'll give us time to get that in and then call those bonds and get them paid off on January 11. Answer any questions?
Any questions for Andy? Typically, good news when you can pay off a bond initiative like this about nine years early, right, Randy?
Yes, very good news.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion on this, council? Hearing none. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2021-55 is adopted.
All right, item 21, look for a motion to consider approval to purchase a new and unused replacement ambulance from Field Fire, a wheeled coach, for the qualifying low bid
Make a motion?
Motion second. And to kick off the discussion on this, Tim Rogge, our new fire chief. Making his official debut, I believe, before the Norfolk City Council.
You bet.
As our new fire chief. Welcome.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, Mayor and Council, this has been another good process. Three solid bids this year, and as we anticipated, prices would continue to go up as we look at these ambulances. It's exciting for us. This will be the third four-wheel-drive ambulance that we'll be putting in service. We'll forget your blessings, so we'll have one more that'll be getting replaced in the next few years, according to CIP. So it's exciting times. They've been invaluable here, obviously in the winter months, and everyone is safer because of these units. We're able to customize them. Our goal when we started in 1516 was to end up with four ambulances that are all designed the same way, regardless of the maker. Their compartments are the same, drugs are located in the same spot, monitors are located in the same spot, so that our full-time and part-time staff are all familiar. And we are very happy that we will get that with this ambulance as well, like we have the last two new ambulances that you've authorized.
Chief, when do you anticipate needing another one?
I think we're slated for '25, '26, somewhere around there. I think we're, every three years is what we're trying to do. 1516, we purchased the first four-wheel drive, and then again in 1819, and then now '21, '22. So we're putting miles on them at a rapid rate.
Yeah.
Call volume is soaring again, as it did last year. I think we surpassed that number last year, which was a record. We surpassed that last month already. So anything going forward is going to be above and beyond what we did last year. So, and predominantly, those calls are ambulance calls.
And you had mentioned earlier, as prices continue to go up, approximately how much, percentage-wise, has this gone up since the last time we really had to take a look?
Well, we did a bunch of, obviously along the whole process, we've been trying to compare apples to apples.
Sure.
And the chassis is held fairly similar to last time with a moderate increase. Availability's going to be tough. That's always a wild card when this goes out to bid. We always try to fulfill that locally if we can, once the bid's awarded. As far as the increase in the overall cost, we're saying right around $10,000 to $20,000 from the last ambulance that we purchased. This particular ambulance was a little bit higher because it was time to rotate one of our power cots out. We have power cots and power load systems that we're putting in place to prevent back injuries, and we have those across the board in all of our ambulances, which is a great thing. And the original power cot that we bought was in 2008, so that'll be replaced as part of this purchase, that $290,000. That'll be within that purchase, so we'll be able to do some better things with that, too.
Do you think eight to 10%?
Roughly.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You bet.
So is this just a replacement one, meaning that will the older unit still be kept on, or you try to?
The older unit will go away. Historically, we've tried to do some things with mutual aid partners, with the council's blessings, and sometimes that works. It's getting harder because a lot of those departments would use the older retired ambulances for equipment rigs, and there's standards now that prevent you from doing that. So turning it into something that would carry rope rescue equipment, even though it looks like an ambulance, we'd use it for something different. They're not allowing that to happen anymore. If you're going to put it in service, you have to follow the right standards. So that makes it harder. So a lot of times, those will just either go to state auction, but it will not be kept. It will not be kept.
Any further questions? Nicely done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion, council? Hearing none. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 22, look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5758 to update Section 24-201 of City Code to identify snow emergency routes reflecting current city needs.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number 5758 to update Section 24-201.
Second.
Motion second. And to kick off this discussion, we'll hear from Chief Don Miller of the Norfolk Police Division.
I'm Mayor and Council. The proposed ordinance in front of you was a joint effort between the street department and the police department. We originally got together to look at the snow emergency needs based on if there was any changes necessary due to our recent annexations. As we looked at it, we realized that the ordinance hadn't been updated since 1996. We took a deep dive into what it all meant. When you look at a snow emergency route, it's designed so that you can normally park on those routes unless there's a snow emergency. Then those routes are restricted. Well, as you look through our old snow emergency routes, there was things like Highway 81, 275, Benjamin Avenue. There's already no parking allowed on those. So the street department, and they can speak to that, they have a plowing pattern that they use where those main thoroughfares are cleared first anyway. So we kind of focused on cleaning up the ordinance. We took those unnecessary ones out, and we identified the areas that the street department felt was necessary to be their snow emergency routes, where there were narrow roadways or something that needed to be restricted for parking during a snow emergency only. So that's how we came up with this list. You might question, well, why was, you know, Benjamin Avenue taken off the list? Well, it will be plowed first, but parking's already restricted, so there's no need to have it listed. So that's how we came up with that list. The street department and I sat down, we went through it item by item, and went back and forth a couple of times to get the best to suit their needs. And this is more the street department's needs, and then the police department will support them and enforce it as necessary during a snow emergency. And historically, you know, during snow emergencies, the snow emergencies, because there's a need for that, those vehicles are often towed compared to being ticketed. So we were careful to not have a whole bunch of them because they are areas that the street department has designated that they clearly need to be able to get through.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you, chief. Any questions?
And of course, the street department guys are here if you have questions about them, about the snow emergency routes, too.
I think you're off the hook. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any discussion on this, council? Okay, hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 24-201 of the official city code to update designated emergency routes to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5758 carries on first reading.
Your honor, I would propose that we pass the ordinance on second and third since there's really no opposition. Suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5758 carries on second and third.
Okay, takes us to item number 23. We'd look for a motion to consider approval of a contract with Clark &amp; Inerson Incorporated for design services for the Highway 81 and Highway 275 landscape improvements project and for completion of the community wayfinding design plan project for an amount not to exceed $176,560.
I'll make the motion.
Motion second. To hear some background on this, Steve Ramis, our public works director.
Mayor and Council, back in 2009, the city completed a master landscape plan for our major corridor areas, specifically Highway 81 and Highways 275. And then about five, six years ago, council identified some dollars to start prioritizing towards that master landscape plan. Earlier this spring, we went out for an RFP and selected Clark &amp; Inerson to develop actual landscape plans for those corridors. It's going to be split up into, with a focus on Highway 81, from the top of the viaduct north to about Paswalk Avenue will be a priority area, as well as Highway 81. From, oh, I'd say, two blocks west of, I'm sorry, Highway 275 will be a priority, from about two blocks west of Highway 81, roughly to First Street, maybe a little bit further east than First Street. So kind of those key entry areas into the community. The secondary focus will be Highway 81 from Paswalk up to Benjamin Avenue, possibly a little bit north of Benjamin Avenue now with the annexation, and then west part of the community, Highway 275 from roughly Highway 81 out to where 275 reconnects with Old Norfolk Avenue, West Norfolk Avenue, so right there at Faith Regional. That last section, what I'm calling Section 2B in the agenda item, there'll be some visioning put around that area in terms of what that might look like as a function of redevelopment with more wider sidewalks, some drainage improvements, possible other improvements along that corridor to help that business corridor there. So those are the areas. Again, it's very focused on Highway 275 and Highway 81 with specific emphasis at the entrance and intersection of Highway 81 and 275. There will be some public interface as we would move forward with that. We have about 1.5 million overall in the budget for that project. This contract's about $126,000, so about eight percent in design cost against that project, which is a reasonable expense on the engineering side, design side. We would expect to move through this process over the next three to four months and have some of those public interfacing conversations probably mid-winter, and then wrap up the design component and plans and bid documents late spring, early summer, and make some decision on what we want to move forward with in terms of construction. The other component, as you mentioned, is the wayfinding portion. About a year ago, we finished the downtown wayfinding plan, and we'll start to move some of those components forward and get our public parking lots re-signed and do some other wayfinding in the downtown area. Again, council did find some dollars to prioritize that wayfinding program in the downtown area. This particular project is going to look at the wayfinding on the outer side of town, so the Benjamin Avenue and the two main entrances on the two highways, Highway 81 and Highway 275, and the four entrances into the community. So there's about $50,000 in this contract that'll go towards that final design of the community wayfinding, and then we'll incorporate into the Benjamin Avenue project those portions that are on Benjamin Avenue, and any portions that are included in some of the master landscape work, we will implement that wayfinding as well in those areas. So that's why it's combined into one contract.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions?
So what are the long-term, how long-term upkeep that, correct?
It would be, it would, oh, the landscaping?
Right.
We'll be working with the Parks Department on the landscaping in those master landscape components. There is, we will be having some conversation on some of our major corridors about how we can structure that we call the terrace area that is typically, you know, the responsibility of the adjacent landowner or business owner. You know, there's a conversation right now that in some of these landscaped areas, depending on the density of the landscaping, that we bring that into the city through city code to maintain, to identifying certain corridors within the community on our major arterials that we would maintain.
Any other questions?
Steve, you had mentioned, right?
Excuse me. I think you had mentioned 126,000, 9,000?
Yeah, so this contract's 176. About 126,000 is for the landscape, and roughly 50,000 for wayfinding.
Okay. For the, when you say wayfinding, for the?
It's for the design of the wayfinding components on Highway 275, Highway 81, some of those other major arterial corridors.
Okay. For the design work?
For the design work.
Yes.
We have in the administration budget- We have in the administration budget, we identified a hundred and twenty-five thousand to implement the downtown wayfinding this year.
And is that probab- is that all we're going to see as far as design goes, going forward with this?
Um, the, the design, the portions of the design that are within any component of the master landscape plans, so like down there at the intersection of Highway eighty-one and two seventy-five, I would assume there's going to be some wayfinding component there, we would implement that. Um, Benjamin Avenue, uh, will implement any wayfinding within that corridor from First to Thirteenth as part of that project.
From a design side?
From the design, yes. We'll take the design that's in here as that's developed. And that, what does the, the design is, you know, the, the look and feel of the wayfinding program is done. The design right now is, what are we going to be pointing to within the community?
So in the, in the overall cost of the program, which I think you said was million-something?
For landscaping or wayfinding?
For the, for the wayfinding.
The wayfinding is all in, I think we are right at about a million dollars all in on the wayfinding.
So you're anticipating the, the design cost of that to fall within that typical seven to nine percent project?
Yeah, I would say we're, yeah, we're falling, um, the first phase of the component was right in that forty-five thousand, this is about fifty thousand, so we're about ninety-five thousand against a one, one point one million dollar wayfinding program, all in.
Thank you.
I'll just comment briefly, because I think these are two pretty important initiatives, one that's been held off for quite some time. As Steve said, uh, council in two thousand nine had approved a master landscape plan that focused on beautifying, uh, major corridors throughout the community, uh, back in two thousand nine. Um, so this has been a long time coming. We, as a council, uh, over the last eleven, twelve years, have, um, kind of kicked this down the, down the street, if you will. Um, but it's been placed in the capital improvement program, that money was placed at that time. I think it's prudent to start utilizing it. Um, and I think, uh, making these areas, these most heavily trafficked areas in our community, look and feel better, um, and be safer for pedestrians makes a difference. And you look at studies and surveys of these type of things, these kinds of efforts, and they do have economic return value. Um, having a, a better, higher level aesthetic appeal helps generate traffic and economic activities in those areas, so it, it helps those, uh, those business communities in those areas. And then the wayfinding part of it, helping people navigate visitors throughout this area and know where they're going and pointing, um, areas of interest within the community. Um, I'm anxious to get the first wave of the wayfinding program, uh, started with down, with a downtown parking initiative, making the existing thirteen public lots in our downtown district more visible, um, and more manageable for motorists. And so you'll see those things start to happen here in the next, uh, few months, and the design phase now of, um, corridor beautification has to start, start at some point, uh, to get us to where we want to be on some, in some of those corridors. So I think it's, um, a prudent use of previously approved, uh, funds, uh, for the community, and important to get these projects going. Any other discussion on this before we vote? Okay, hearing done. Please vote. The suspense is coming.
Yeah, we're still wait, there we go. All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item twenty-four. We'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-seven, fifty-nine, adjusting the ward and precinct boundary lines for the city of Norfolk using twenty-twenty census data.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Motion in second, and for background on this, Brianna Durst, our City Clerk.
Thank you. Uh, every ten years, following the release of the decennial census of population, it is the responsibility of every governing body whose members are elected by wards or districts to balance the population across those wards or districts. We have done this by redrawing our ward lines in order to maintain substantial population equality in each of our four wards. Uh, this year, the use of a GIS vendor was strongly recommended by both the league and Secretary of State's office, and in August, you approved a contract with a company, G Works, to assist us in this process. G Works is also the company that Madison County contracted with, uh, which proved to be very beneficial. We had the same representative with G Works, and we were able to work closely together on this project and spent several hours on the phone together getting this all ironed out. Um, there was little movement in the current ward lines. Um, there was movement in each ward due to the annexation, and then slight movements, um, in, in the middle to, to balance those population numbers. The estimated population of the city of Norfolk is twenty-six thousand, fifty-nine people. This is up from twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ten in two thousand and ten, or an increase of one thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine. We do know about half of that is due to the annexation. Um, it is an estimate, a good estimate, but it is still an estimate because we use census blocks to get our population numbers. This is because census blocks are the smallest geographical unit to get population numbers. Uh, that's not an issue in, in the middle of town, but as we near our city limit boundaries, census blocks are larger, and a census block may be partially inside city limits and partially outside of city limits. And we use the population of the entire census block because it's just not really feasible or possible to break that down any further. So using the estimated population of twenty-six thousand, fifty-nine, the target population for each ward is six thousand, five hundred and fifteen people. It is generally acceptable that the population in each ward vary by as much as five percent above or below that target number. So Norfolk's ward should range between six thousand, two hundred and five and six thousand, eight hundred and forty people. The estimated population for Ward One is six thousand, eight hundred and four, or four point four four percent above the target population. Estimated population of Ward Two is six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen, or four point six two percent above that target population. Now, we do know the population in Ward Two decreases by about a hundred people. This is an instance where we had census blocks both inside and outside city limits. So the Cedar Ridge and Terra Heights areas, um, are in census blocks that are both inside and outside, so the populations of those two neighborhoods are included in that number. If we reduce that number by about a hundred, we're really closer to about three percent above the target population. Estimated population for Ward Three is six thousand, two hundred and eighteen, or four point five six below the target population, and Ward Four, six thousand, two hundred and twenty-one, or four point five one percent below the target population. Ideally, I would have liked to have gotten these deviations closer to zero, uh, but the county does theirs first, and we need to try to make sure we follow their lines as closely as possible. And so to, to move any of our ward lines to try to get more population in the smaller districts, three and four, that had an impact on the county's districts, or it would create a ballot split, which isn't really what you want to do either. Um, well, the main component of redistricting is to balance the population numbers across our wards. Another aspect is to try to get our ward, wards to line up with the county and reduce those ballot splits. Uh, last year, Madison County had ninety-one separate ballots, which is quite an undertaking, and just increases the, the risk of error there. While the redistricting process must be done at least every ten, must be done every ten years after the census, we can do this process again anytime. I do not want to, but we can. So if there are significant changes and we want to do this process again in five years or so, that option is there. And finally, as our new ward map must be forwarded to the election commissioner by December thirtieth, I would recommend approval of the ordinance on all three readings tonight. If there are concerns or questions, we can push that second and third readings to December twentieth, if necessary. If it wouldn't pass on third on December twentieth, we would have to have a special city council meeting, um, on Christmas Eve to get this to the county by December thirtieth.
That sounds like a lot of fun. Um, I'll thank you, Brianna. This was, um, certainly a long and tedious process. And, uh, we know staff and Brianna, uh, did a lot of hard work to make it all jive right. And, uh, again, very important process, given census data to make the four wards in this community equitable, equitable as possible in terms of population distribution. Any questions, Council, or Brianna?
Oh, that is not shown on here. Let me look at my official.
Can you go in the breakdown of Ward Three?
So it's just not outlined here, but if you go to the, the individual Ward Three map, it is on that far eastern side.
Exhibit A within your packet.
Page ninety-two. So it just didn't, they just didn't get this.
So it still exists.
Differentiated on, on this full map. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing done. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to repeal ordinance number fifty-one, seventy-two of the city of Norfolk, to redefine the wards of the city of Norfolk and the election precincts composing such wards, to adopt a revised map of such wards and precincts, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-seven, fifty-nine carries on first reading.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number fifty-seven, fifty-nine on second and third?
Second.
Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-seven, fifty-nine carries on second and third.
So we avoid the Christmas Eve meeting?
Yes.
Gotcha, all right. Item twenty-five. Look for a motion to consider approval of a notice of bid award to J. H. Hesby Company Incorporated of Norfolk, Nebraska, for the Norfolk Police Division Phase One project for an amount of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in second, and hear some background on this. Again, Chief Don Miller of Norfolk Police Division.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Uh, this process has been a bit of an interesting process. As you're aware, we had been working for about a year and a half, well, the idea of combining dispatch centers has been talking about for decades. Been talking about seriously for about the last year and a half to two years, trying to work out the details of making that happen. Part of that process was hoping to get the construction phase done in coordination with the actually taking over dispatching. Um, processes take time. We started taking over the dispatch October fifth. Um, we are currently cramped into our current dispatch center with, um, that is, that is in serious need of some expansion. We got to the process of, um, through the architects, and we got some estimates, and then we went to bid, and we opened up the bids, and the bids were, were higher than expected. Um, there was four bids that we received, the lower three bids were all within ten percent of each other. Uh, we, as a staff, met trying to determine, um, if there's places that we can cut to save some money, and also trying to figure out if this is going to proceed, how do we come up with the funding for it? Um, this, this wasn't a, uh, program that was put together with a lot of fluff, so to speak. It was pretty basic, uh, to get a functional dispatch center. And, um, so there isn't a lot of places to cut. There's some places we're looking at, we've met with the, uh, contractor, the architects have met with the contractor, and, and we believe there's probably some small savings, but nothing real major. Uh, we went to a subcommittee, met with a couple of the elected officials to determine, you know, is this something, you know, how do we work through this, this process? And, uh, we've determined that in addition to the money that we had allocated, uh, we're gonna, we would, we would propose going for some of the CARES Act funding that we had allocated for the police division expansion, that we would have used a little bit farther down the road, but we're going to need to move that forward to get this project going. Um, it is a, it is a project, there's, there's a significant need, we've committed to doing this. Um, uh, but unfortunately, we're, we're caught up in the, uh, on the other side of the supply chain, costs, and, uh, we sat down with, with the contractor, we're comfortable that, uh, that it's a fair bid in the current environment. Like I say, there was three bids, or there was four bids, three of them were the ten percent of each other, with this bid, uh, being substantially lower than even the second bid, both in cost and time. So, um, we're asking, I'll answer whatever questions you have, the contractor is here to answer questions as well. Um, we'll answer your questions, and we're going to ask that you, this get awarded so we can proceed. Our fears are that things are continuing to go up, and we also want to get moving and lock in our prices now so that we can proceed. If we, if we would start this process over again, I, I fear that it would be substantially higher in, in a couple of months if we tried to do this process, and, and I don't, with getting four bids in, I don't know that we would have any benefit to doing that. So I'll answer any of those difficult questions as to why we're so far over, over what we anticipated.
Chief, I got a question with the, originally, when this estimate was coming in at two hundred and seventy-five thousand, the county was going to help with a hundred thousand?
Yes.
Since this conversation has progressed and the cost has increased to what it is, have we had the conversation with the county to see if they're willing to increase their portion?
I have had, I've had that conversation, I haven't gotten an answer. So we're, we're, we're having those conversations, because they're, you know, in, in addition to the construction, we also have to buy desks and furniture and those types of things. And originally, I was thinking their portion was going to go to that, you know, as, as I'm allocating funds. Um, now we're going to have to allocate all of that, but I have gone to the county and asked them to consider increasing their contribution. No, I have not heard back on that yet.
Chief, it's a, certainly a sign of the times.
Yes.
The dollar amount. Uh, what do we know about contractor's ability to complete this on time? Or not, if not on time, how many days do they anticipate?
This low bid is bid at a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and sixty-eight days. Um, the highest bid was two hundred and ninety-five, I believe. So, um, you know, he's indicated that it can be done on time, and if we lock in our prices, he believes that there, it could be on budget. Uh, I'm, preliminary conversation with some architects, there's some small things we can do to save some money, but like I say, it'll be, you know, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars, not, not major amounts, but we're going to continue those conversations and try to figure out, uh, where we can still have an operational dispatch center, but, uh, try to cut a couple of corners along the way.
So we are pretty much on the timeline we had hoped for in the first place?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Other than we wanted to have it done by now, but that's just the way the processes work.
When you had that initial two hundred and seventy-five thousand, how many days did you anticipate that?
We didn't really put a date on the original, with the architects, we came up with a cost because it'd be kind of hard for us to estimate, in the Norfolk environment, what that was. So we wanted the architects, or the, I'm sorry, we wanted the contractors to tell us how long they could do it. Um, you know, we're in a situation where if it took a little longer, we can work with that. I mean, we're, we're already working within that, uh, without the facility. Um, so the fact that the current bid, the low bid, is the lowest timeframe is a, is a bonus. Uh, but we, we didn't, as soon as possible is what we were hoping for, and that's what we told them, uh, but we didn't put a number on it.
And is it lower because it's about two months shorter than the, the other ones? I mean, if we, if they extend to the next two months to the, possibly the next, uh, bid, uh, days, are we still competitive? Are we going to have an increase there?
The dollar, no, the dollar amount was substantially higher for the number two bid. Huh?
About fifty thousand, so.
Sure. It was, and that was more time and more money. The second one was?
I think their bid is, is good. The two months short of the next bid was concerning.
Actually.
If they can get it done, that's great.
No, it's, um, low bid is a hundred and sixty-eight days, the next lowest bid was two hundred and twenty-five days. So the, the second one was more in cost and time.
It's two, two months longer. I'm concerned that if this takes two months longer, that the cost will, but, but if they're good, if they're good with the days and the dollars, then it's a good bid. good, if they're good with the days and the dollars, then it's a good bid.
That, all I can, Jim Lane can answer the specifics on the timeframes, but through my conversations with him, he was comfortable with the timeframe and the, no, there could be, let's say, as an example, there might be a door that is out, you know, there's a supply chain prevents a problem. I don't have a problem with that, we know we can work around those things, but the main process and the main project, he was comfortable, he could get done within a hundred-and-sixty-eight days. Any other questions?
Any other questions for you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, counsel? Or questions? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item twenty-six, look for motion to consider ordinance number fifty-seven sixty to amend City Code Section twenty-four dash two-one-four to clarify, city and state trucks can utilize roadways off of designated truck routes for maintenance, snow removal, and during emergency situations.
And off for consideration, ordinance number fifty-seven sixty?
Second.
Okay, motion in second, and once again, Chief Miller for background on this item, please.
Mayor and counsel, this is more of a housekeeping item than anything else, and we recently came in with the truck ordinance to keep the larger trucks on the designated routes, and now that we're getting into these snow discussions, we got to thinking about it, and while some may not complain about it, we wanted to put it into the ordinance that snow removal vehicles, road maintenance vehicles for the city and the state can operate off of the designated snow routes. If we didn't do that, then, then there may be some concern, so we just wanted to clarify that in the ordinance itself for future use.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Hearing no discussion, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section twenty-four dash two-fourteen of the official city code to exclude city and state vehicles from being restricted to truck routes when said vehicles are being used for road maintenance, snow removal, or responding to an emergency situation, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-seven sixty carries on first reading.
Why does everybody look at me for this one? All right, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass this ordinance number fifty-seven sixty since this looks to be just a cleanup issue.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-seven sixty carries on second and third.
Okay, that moves us into the administrative reports section of the council agenda, but prior to moving to the two thousand and twenty-one snow and ice plan that will be presented by our new streets director, Will Elwell, we have another introduction to make, a new member to city of Norfolk administrative staff, Nate Powell joins us as our new Parks and Recreation Director, coming from Mitchell, South Dakota, where he managed the parks and rec system there, and has previous experience managing parks and forests in Montana and California, is that right, Nate? Come forward, please, and introduce yourself.
Mayor, counsel, it's, I'm glad to be here, I'm glad to be here in Norfolk. I've been coming here since I was a kid, and we've been moving this direction, and we're glad to be here, there's only one job I would want here, and I'm glad to have it, and glad to be a part of this community.
Tell us a little bit about your, about your background and how you got here, Nate?
Yep. I have, my education is in Parks and Recreation Management, both my, my undergrad and my master's degree as well, in Parks and Recreation Administration. I've worked at a camp in California for ten years. From there, I accepted a position with Montana State Parks, serving in eastern Montana, managing four state parks, including Montana's largest state park over there. It was a great experience, enjoyed it. Because of that experience, Mitchell asked me to come out and help them work on their lake project that we've been doing for the last five years, and I'm glad to see that moving forward before I left, and, and we had a great, I had a great time there managing the Parks and Recreation Department, and it's a great experience, and I'm glad to be able to bring that experience here to Norfolk, and looking forward to the future that we have here.
Very good. Well, we plan to use that education experience and put it to good use here, so glad to have you on board. Thank you. And next up, as a new administrative director within the city of Norfolk, we'll hear from streets manager, Well, Elwell, who will present the snow and ice plan for two thousand and twenty-one, but first, I'm going to ask you to do a little bit of the same thing, Will, and introduce yourself to us.
Mayor, counsel, Will Elwell, I lived in Minnesota my last twenty-five years, and I grew up in Nebraska around York area, so had the opportunity to come back closer to home with family, and excited to see what it has, so.
Tell us a little bit about the county in which you were, county government in which you worked in Minnesota?
So there I was, the operations supervisor for Scott County, had about seven-hundred-and-fifty lane miles that we took care of, the general maintenance to plow in snow to, you know, whichever, fill in potholes, ditching, the culvert replacements, overlays, working with contractors. We had about eighteen, eighteen maintenance guys in the summer. We had to go out with twenty-four plow trucks, twenty-two to twenty-four, depending on the snowstorm. Yeah, we could move a lot of snow in a hurry if we needed to up there, but most of the time, we'd send out twenty-two trucks. We could pretty much have the roads cleared and home within eight hours on a normal storm. Longer ones may take you, you know, one on for days, you know, you, we'd put in sixteen hours a day or so, and then just work it out from there, but yeah, so excited to be here in Norfolk.
Good to have you on board, and that's a good segue to what you're about to present, the two thousand and twenty-one snow and ice plan for the city of Norfolk.
Yep, so updated, some of this is probably some that Mark had with coming in blind with what y'all had here, so I updated the miles and stuff from the annexation, so this year we plow around four-hundred-and-eighty-nine lane miles with the streets and alleys. The emergency snow routes consist of about seventy-five lane miles, and then plus clean out about sixty cul-de-sacs throughout the city. Looks like on your average over the last ten years, you've used about five-hundred-and-twenty-five tons of salt, which is impressive after coming from where I was at. And then the existing snow operations, the, mainly the goal would be to try to get out and clean the streets when, you know, it gets started, I guess, I didn't put no time on when we'd start. I think it's key to be there early, stop some of the compaction, you get that layer of snow off, same time you got to look at the timing of the event, so, you know, in a perfect world, you like to start at two o'clock in the morning, that's not always that easy to do, so there might be some mid-afternoon starts and run to get people home, and, you know, things like that, but. The snow removal consists of twenty-two street, twenty-two staff of street and fleet personnel. The equipment consists of thirteen plow trucks, four loaders with pushers or blades, one loader with a snow blower, two pickup plows for alleys, and one plow truck salting at all times, and then a person available for emergencies. On hand, the way it's set up there, can have twenty-thousand gallons of brine mixed in in the tanks at all the time. They got an eight-thousand gallon tank there for, I think, believe they're using BEAT-55, which is good product. They can have that on hand, and then they can have four-thousand gallon loaded on the trucks for distributing the brines. The snow operation priorities is the snow emergency routes, and then the downtown business district. So they are the first streets that staff plow when they leave the yard, and they're designed so the traveling public only has to travel about six blocks to get to a snow emergency route that's been plowed. There's a map, it's a little bit maybe hard to read, but that's of all the, all of them combined of the snow emergency routes there in front of you. And I think there might even be a few marked there of the no-salt streets, which will be coming up here. The downtown business district, the plowing operation normally starts around two o'clock or after in the morning, just because of parked vehicles, so whenever they're out of there, it'd be nice to get started on that, and that consists of two road graders, a loader with a blower, and a contractor to help haul that snow away. On an average, it takes about four-plus hours, depending on the size of the storm, to clean up the downtown business district area. Snow emergency declaration, it's declared by the city officials, necessary for the public safety. It makes snow removal more timely and cost efficient, and parking on the even side of the street during the snow emergencies is very important, just to be able to get through all them, so not having to go back and backtrack. And then during the snow emergencies, make sure they're parking on the even sides of the street. Snow emergency notification, dispatch and the city crews, dispatch and city crews are notified. Emergency text alerts, Twitter, Facebook, local media, electronic signboards, all that is, notifications go out. There's a number here for the city's snow number. It's four oh two eight four four two two nine nine. You can sign up for those alerts on the website at norforkne.gov for anybody that would like to get those. Deicing operations, we'll work closely with the police division. Prioritize, priority is the emergency routes in the bridges, and then the no-salt on the new streets, so those will get sand or whatnot for the traction, and I'll read those off. So the thousand block of Sunrise Drive through seven oh nine Legacy Drive, the fourteen-hundred to fifteen-hundred block of Homewood Drive, which is Clark to Highland, the fifteen-hundred block to seventeen oh five Hillview Drive, twenty-sixth north of Sheridan Drive, four-hundred block to five-hundred block of East Maple Avenue, Pine near Willow, the five-hundred block, six-hundred block east of Spruce Avenue, Dead End to Willow, Benjamin Avenue and Twenty-Fifth Street Patching, BlackBerry Drive northeast of Westview, BlackBerry, BlackBerry Drive north of Sheridan Drive, Bluff Avenue east of Chestnut Street, Box Elder Street, Walnut Circle to seven-hundred block of Box Elder Street and west part of Maple Avenue, Cambridge Way, street west, west of South End, Windsor Way to North Thirty-first Street, East Grove Avenue, Vicry Village, where the new apartment complexes are, east portion of Benjamin Avenue and Thirty-seventh Street intersection, Maple Avenue, Legacy Bend, Monroe Avenue west of Fifteenth Street, North Thirty-first Street north of Dover Drive, Reef Circle, Reef Street, Sheridan Drive west of Twenty-Fifth Street, Taylor Avenue, Twenty-Fifth Street to twenty-four hundred block of Taylor Avenue, West Drive south of Sheridan Drive, and Woodcrest Street. Critical salting locations, it's broke up into three different areas because of the three salt trucks, there actually might be four now, but, so they tried to divide them out evenly for the trucks that go out for salting conditions. And then the enhanced snow operations, if it's a major storm coming in, we try to run an A shift and B shift, you know, from two to three-thirty, and then three-thirty to two, it's kindly a time, actually the timing of the storm will play a big part of that, but it's mainly when we're forecasted over six inches. With the B shift, it's an additional eight plow operators to run snow emergency routes and keep those clean during that time with two loader, two loader operators. The goal is to keep primary and snow emergency routes open is the main goal of having all that. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Will. Any questions on the snow and ice plan?
I got a couple just because of your background, but we did a few overlays, I didn't see those on the no-salt streets, is that an issue for salt, or?
No, they'll actually be the ones that ice up first, though. It might be, I talked to Jason Osom today on actually doing anti-icing, I'm not sure how big, it sounds like the city's into that, but it plays a major role on, new blacktop like that, they'll ice up first, so don't be surprised if you don't see something going down Thursday afternoon if they keep talking to the snow. Bridge decks are another big one that ice first, but sometimes that, well, it's not designed to melt the snow, but it's designed to keep it from bonding, but on a new overlay where it gets iced faster, that'll actually help, you know, keep it broke down a little longer before it dilutes out, you know, before you can get there, but don't be surprised if they're slick before the rest of them are, just the way they are. Up there, we started seal coating our overlays the same year for that reason, it just seemed like it held a little more grip there, and then if we do it to go out and anti-ice, it seemed like it held the material there a little better for that, but.
So you said the seal coat was a good thing to have on there?
Yeah.
Is that an expensive project, process?
You know, I don't, no, it's actually the minimal you could probably spend on something for a preventative maintenance for overlays. You know, cost-wise, I don't remember off the top of my head where it's at, we went through the construction when we had ours done, but it did our figuring for us, but what we did find with doing them the same year, it seemed like we were saving all the oils instead of letting it get oxidized out from the sun and everything, and started following up with some states that it did it, Montana's done it three or twenty-some years, and there's different others, and so we went to that program, and we actually had really good luck with it, so.
Lasted good, Will?
Yeah, so the, we tried to get his five to seven years out of it before you put your second one on, so the plan was that we would do three seal coats within a twenty-five-year period, and then be seeing if it was ready for a new one to overlay. Yeah, we were having excellent luck with it.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yep.
I got another question, because I caught, I caught the impressive part on the amount of salt that we use. So, so my question is, do you feel like we use a lot of salt?
Oh, no.
Too much salt, should we use more brine? What's the, what's your thoughts there?
You know, no, you don't use as much salt, you know, of course, come from a different atmosphere up there, but we had a black road policy, so you know, we, on a normal snow season up there, we'd go through ten-thousand ton of salt, you know, but, you know, more lane miles, but some of it's the cold weather, you know, takes more, obviously, if you want to get it to a black road policy, sometimes we had to give up on that here and there, maybe at sixty below or something, but I think there's places where the sand salt probably worked great, and then there's, you know, your high-volume roads, I would, Jason, I talked about that a little bit at the end of the day, also, is my question if the sand's doing much when you have a high-volume traffic, just for the fact that it don't last long, I mean, once you get much traffic on it, within an hour or two, normally that's, you know, beat it down into the ice or the snow or whatever it may be, and there's just no salt there to melt anything, so.
And we will maintain hope that you never see as much, as much snow here as you did in Minnesota.
I do too, actually.
Any other questions for Will?
Just a quick question, will this information be available on the website?
I believe so, I think that was the plan, so.
Okay, thank you, no way the public can see it. Don't really have, other than welcome, like everybody else is saying. Do you want to just mention that it's, it's really important for folks to, to get on that text list? I get calls every year from folks that are a little upset that they found out they shouldn't be parking on one side of the street or the other, but, you know, they have data plans, they have cell phones, and if you just get on that thing, it's very, very helpful, so.
Absolutely.
Hopefully the public will do.
Good point. Good point, good point. Alright, anything else? Nicely done. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we move into a closed session, and I would ask from the Council for a motion to go into closed session for the protection of the public interest to discuss potential litigation.
Make the motion.
Motion and second. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, motion approved. Again, this is a closed session for the sole purpose of updating elected officials on potential litigation.
The only item discussed during the closed session was potential litigation. So may I have a motion to come out of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
That concludes this evening's City Council meeting.